Welcome, everyone. I call the December 7, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are public hearings on transfer development rights and on the bike plan, and review and approval of a letter to council regarding middle housing. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote, our hybrid meeting format. City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged, and we did receive an email. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate the desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. Imagine Bothell Notice, City website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public for providing comments. A video of this meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded, and available for viewing later on City's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. We have Kerry Westerbeck.
Here. Karsten Kur.
Here.
Claire Robson.
Present.
Toni Andrews.
Here.
And Sarah Gustafson.
Here.
In addition, Deputy Community Development Director Ashley Winchell, Capital Division Manager and Capital Division Manager Steve Morikawa are also attending. And Sherman Gong is attending remotely. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at the specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So on to our agenda. The first agenda item is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no longer than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. This time is for items not on tonight's agenda. Deputy Director Winchell, please let us know if there are any comments.
No comments have been received, and there's no one in the attendees' room other than a consultant for a presentation later tonight.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move on from our public comment. First item, the next item before us are the minutes of the November 16th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Anders.
Toni Anders, I move to approve the meeting of the December 7 meeting.
Is there a second to the motion to approve? Commissioner Kur.
I second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the November 16th meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Any needed modifications? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the November 16th meeting, please indicate.
Aye.
So we have unanimous consent. The meeting minutes are adopted. Next item, new business. Do we have any new business before us?
No new business.
No new business. All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to our first public hearing. And the first item on the agenda is the bike plan. Shall we open the hearing? Yes?
Yes, we can open the hearing for the bike plan. Sherman Gong will be the presenter on this item.
Okay. And it's, he looks like he, here he is.
Hello. Let me share screen here. Good evening. Uh-oh, light just went out.
You gotta wave your hands.
It's just, ah, now I have to go and open. Somebody's gotta go turn it on. Here we go. Okay. Host disabled. What? Sure what that means. I don't know what that means.
Let me see if I can fix that.
Okay.
Sherman, I made you a co-host. I think that should fix the issue.
Let's try it again. Here we go. Share.
We've got it.
Okay. All right, are we seeing the first slide there?
Sherman, we're seeing a Word doc.
Uh-oh, okay.
So I think if you go to PowerPoint and you start from the first slide, you push from beginning.
I did. Yeah, I did that.
Okay, now if you go full screen.
So then if you go down.
I gotta switch it.
Yeah, I think you just need a, there should be, if you go down to the PowerPoint thing in the start bar down there, click on that.
Let's see. Okay, one second.
And then if you click on display settings.
Slot it.
Yeah, there you go. Now we're seeing it.
Okay. Yeah. Need to get to my notes. One second here. Okay. First slide there.
You're good.
Okay. Well, good evening, commissioners. Sherman Gong here again. City Transportation Planner, and with me Steve Morikawa again, Capital Division Manager. Tonight, we discuss the final draft bike plan and some revisions we made based on Planning Commission comments from our last meeting on November 16th. Who would be discussing the findings, conclusions, and recommendations for the bike plan, as well as the final proposed comprehensive plan amendments with the suggested revisions from planning commissioners. Again, we thank you for your time, patience, as we prepare the final documentation for your review before you make a recommendation to City Council for approval. Let's see. Oh my gosh. All right. At our last meeting, Commissioner Kur inquired about the ranking of the 228th Street segment from Bothell Everett Highway to Ninth Avenue compared to the 228th Street sections on either side of that segment, which are ranked significantly higher. We decided to review the entire project list and see if contiguous projects such as this should be combined projects for the prioritization ranking to be more consistent. And segments could be considered as a project phase rather than as a separate project. Other projects that were originally identified as separate projects were also reviewed and combined. The combination of projects did not significantly impact the overall priority of projects, but did improve the ranking for the segments that were combined. Upon reviewing the priority criteria, that 228th Street segment in question, which is only like a couple of blocks long, did not include any equity in components like the west and east 228th Street segments, which resulted in the lower ranking. So staff has decided that it makes sense to include the short segment of the 228th Street segment west of Ninth, to the west of Ninth Avenue, and would ultimately just be considered as a separate phase if and when funding becomes available, which we could then address sooner, given that it's a important connectivity to the north-south spine corridor. This combination resulted in the segment originally ranked as number 41 to a number seven ranking. It's not forwarding. There we go, okay. The other combined projects that we reviewed and looked at for continuity and consistency included Project 43, which is a Meridian connection from 240th to the Kenmore City Limits, is again another short section, which was added to Project Number 17, which is Meridian Avenue from 228th to 240th. We also combined Project Number 48, which is a section from, of SR 524, the north end of the city, from 20th Avenue, which is not built yet, but will be as part of the Kenyon Park Regional Growth Center, to the East City Limit, and added that to Project 22, which is SR 524 from the North Peak Trail across SR 527 to 20th Avenue, making that a single project as well. And then the final revision was an extension of 240th Street, which is Project 39, which is from Bothell Everett Highway to Meridian Avenue to extend to the West City Limit, which is west of Meridian, because 240th is actually a collector arterial on our functional classification map and calls for bicycle facilities as well. So this extension added the institutional criteria because it now kind of goes by Shelton, Shelton views, and it's a significant connection to that school. And revised the priority ranking, moving the project into now the number 11 ranking. So the proposed bike plan needs to be adopted into the city's comprehensive plan to become the official document of reference, which will be done by action. That's Transportation Action Number 65. And based on Planning Commission's suggestions from the last meeting, the revisions made to the comprehensive plan actions include, one, revising the Transportation Action Number 56 to ensure that the city will champion ease of onboarding bikes by bicyclists onto transit buses, basically rolling, being able to trying to roll on bikes onto the transit from Commissioner Kur. So the, the action now reads investigate and advocate for good bicycle connections between neighborhoods, growth, and activity centers and transit facilities, and advocate to improve ease of onboarding and access and safety for all users to transit. We also revised Transportation Action 62 to require, rather than encourage, the provision of bike storage, which now reads, require existing and new employers and businesses to provide convenient bicycle parking facilities for employees and customers. And then finally, number three, Commissioner Gustafson wanted to add a new action. So to ensure the maintenance of bicycle facilities are accounted for, we added Transportation Action Number 66 as a new action, which reads, development of maintenance and operating budget to maintain the bicycle facilities over time with an amount to be dedicated to this task to be considered during the biennial budgeting process. Okay. Then we want to go over now the findings, conclusions, and recommendations for your review and for this public hearing to recognize the specific comments made by commissioners at the last meeting. And the findings that we developed include amending, to amend the transportation element of the plan and the proposed language in the amendment for the transportation element of the plan will adopt the Bothell Citywide Bike Plan by action. Planning Commission finds the existing bicycle facilities actions needing to be updated to reflect the current vision of a complete safe bicycle facilities network citywide. The Planning Commission finds that future bicycle facilities shall be protected and not on-street facilities. And Planning Commission finds that the transportation element amendment of the comprehensive plan shall, one, include a new action that considers developing a maintenance and operating budget dedicated to provide existing and future bike facilities over time to provide a safe and accessible bike network, include a revision for an existing action that will advocate for good bike access and improve the ease ordering bikes to transit, and include a revision for an existing action that will require, rather than encourage, existing and new businesses and employers to provide convenient bicycle facilities, parking facilities for employer, employees, and customers. To summarize the conclusions, the potential plan elements have been drafted, noticed, and reviewed by the public and considered by the Planning Commission in accordance with applicable laws of the state of Washington and the city of Bothell. The potential plan element amendments are necessary to adopt the Bothell Citywide Bike Plan. And the potential plan amendments are in the best interest of public health, safety, and welfare. To conclude, the recommendation reads as follows. Based upon these findings and conclusions and the entire record, the Planning Commission recommends the City Council adopt the proposed plan amendments in order to adopt the Bothell Citywide Bike Plan by action as Exhibit A, which would be forthcoming and developed for City Council to these findings, conclusions, and recommendations. So our next steps will be to prepare the agenda bill for the council meeting in January and to complete the CEPA checklist review process for the bike plan. So do you have any questions? Like, you willing to take those now?
All right, thank you, Transportation Planner Gong. So commissioners, let's first see if there are any questions or comments around the portions of the code and the, the elements in the plan.
Commissioner Anders has her hand.
Commissioner Anders.
Thank you.
Stop sharing, I guess, if I can, see, and.
I have a question about the language. I just didn't understand the part where it talks about bicycle facilities being protected and not on-street facilities. I didn't, I wasn't tracking that very well, but I'm trying to understand what you mean by not on-street.
Okay. I think I understand the question to be what the findings were for bike facilities to be protected, not on-street facilities.
Yeah.
Basically, when we started this process, we had developed a plan that included bike facilities generally following, you know, basically national standards that includes bicycle facilities that are not only, you know, bike lanes in the street, but like buffered bike lanes also, which have a little wider protective striping, I guess, between the bike lane and the, and the travel lane. But again, it's still in the street, not behind the curb and landscape strip like protected bike lanes are, which is also a potential facility type that is available to us. The feeling was that the protected bike lanes is really what's gonna get people out there and, and be able to travel safely. Staff agrees with that. It's not a lot. And we decided to basically revise the whole city plan to include significantly protected bike lanes everywhere, except with the exception of a few neighborhoods that include neighborhood, we call neighborhood greenways because they really have slow-moving traffic, not a lot of volume, traffic volumes, and would be, we feel safe enough with some markings on the ground called charros that would also pertain to downtown Bothell, for example, where you do not want to sacrifice parking, downtown parking spaces to include protected bike lanes. So basically, and then also some shared use paths, which, which are in essence also protected bike lanes.
Thank you. I was reading that very badly.
Okay.
Other commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Kur.
Thanks, this is Karsten. I want to thank the team for incorporating the suggestions that I made at last meeting. I think that they capture what I was trying to say, so I wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, Commissioner Robson.
Thank you. Um, I, I just had a few questions. If, whether or not this new plan addresses the concerns expressed by the resident that came in talking about along Bothell Way, I believe, the, the safe bike paths along that, along that main street that are a little unsafe because there are parked cars in that, along the bike path essentially, and his concern regarding a safer crossing over, I believe it's 522 right there to Bothell Way from Bothell Landing. And I, I realize that those could be potentially very big projects that may not, we just may not be able to cover in this portion of the bike plan, but did, did, did I miss it maybe, or did you, or you guys just weren't able to, to address that in these, in this revision?
And I remember the comments from David Levittin that was regarding, basically, the segment of Bothell Way between 190th roughly, well, no, I'll say that, let me change that. Like, well, the beginning of the, the sections that has the parking, it's like McMinimans roughly, all the way down to SR 522, you're correct. Those facilities were, were built and, and, you know, planned out a long time ago with the intent to be a low-speed, low, low-traffic facility that could accommodate bikes safely. Granted, there, you know, there is moving traffic in there, it's not, is not a protected bike lane per se, but we felt that, you know, that was, that discussion had been, had been gone over. I think personally, I feel that it's safe enough. I mean, there's, you know, would you let a 12-year-old ride your bike down that by himself? Maybe, maybe not, but, you know, they're gonna take the sidewalk. It's kind of like leading children through, you know, any street downtown where we have planned charros, for example. And, yeah, I don't know if we're gonna be able to, you know, add protected bike lanes now with that configuration in that section. Maybe in the future, there's different, different discussions that could occur in terms of removing parking again, and, you know, that's at the, that's at the, you know, expense of other, other businesses and such. As far as the crossing of 522, there is a pedestrian bridge, well, it's not even pedestrians, it's the bridge of 102nd. Well, has a planned shared-use path that will be built when that bridge gets rebuilt to cross over 522 as a separated bike, a separated physical facility. But other than that, the only other way to make it any safer to cross, other than crossing at the signals, basically, you know, just as any pedestrian is, has, is would be to, to build additional, you know, bridges over, over the highway. And that would be a very costly project, but again, understanding that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a busy street to cross and, and a significant connection to get to Bothell Landing, as well as, you know, the Samamish River Trail and all the other amenities on that side. Understood, and that we could, that's something that could be looked at again in the, in the way long term because that's just such an expensive project for that crossing. And the, and we do have the bridge, 102nd Street Bridge, that we hope to use to accommodate something much safer.
Thank you, yes, mentioning that 102nd Street Bridge really, that is a really good reminder of a safe way to get across that street. And thank you for your clarification. I know there are a lot of projects going on there on a very long time scale that stretches back and forward. So I really appreciate your taking the time to clarify how all these moving parts and fit together. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, I'm Sarah Gustafson here, and echoing Commissioner Robson's thanks to Senior Planner Gong for keeping all of these details in order when there are a lot of moving pieces to this target. I wanted to ask one question to follow up to Commissioner Robson. For the 102nd Street Bridge with the shared-use bike path, for folks who are heading northbound on that shared-use bike path, will there be a protected turn lane to turn on the Samamish River Trail? How are we going to make that connection between 102nd and Samamish River Trail?
Sorry, was that a question for Commissioner Robson or me?
That's for you. Thank you.
I think, I thought you said, for, I thought you said.
Yeah.
Commissioner Robson, okay. So that, that, for that bridge, I, I believe the connection, there's a, you, there's a, a, a course, a part of that where you can turn off the 102nd Street Bridge to get onto the Samamish River Trail. So I'm not sure that takes you, takes you down to the trail where like that gravel parking lot is, I guess I'll say. I think that's the connection, so I'm not sure, understand what you mean by a left turn.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll lower my hand. What I'm trying to think of is if you're going northbound on a protected bike lane, so you would be on the right side of the street, if I'm thinking. And then if you want to get into that gravel parking lot, you're gonna need to hang a sharp, I guess it would be a sharp left, kind of against traffic, and. would be a sharp left, kind of against traffic, and how can you signal that you're going to go there? Is there going to be protection?
I see. So, the shared lane will actually, for anybody going northbound, let's say from East Riverside Drive, you're going, that shared lane will go all the way down to East Riverside Drive. So, it's not a protected bike lane for, there's not going to be a protected bike lane northbound on that section of 102nd, it'll, the shared lane will be carried all the way down to East Riverside Drive, so if you're, you wouldn't be going northbound on 102nd per se, you actually be, you'll have to get onto the shared lane at the south, south end of that shared lane, shared-use path at East Riverside Drive.
Okay, so you'd still be in mixed traffic when you're trying to turn the left onto Samamish River Trail?
Sherman, let me take a shot.
Okay.
I think the difference is, we're not going to put a protected bike lane, one on each side, on 102nd Avenue, the thought is to put a shared-use path on the west side of the bridge. So, you know where the single sidewalk is now? Picture that being 12 feet wide, and you'll be sharing that with pedestrians and bikes going in two directions. There's just not enough room there to put facilities on both sides of the road, and just like you pointed out, if we did a protected bike lane, one in each direction, then we start getting difficulty in crossing over on either end of that stretch of roadway. So, it was felt like a shared-use path would go north and south from Main Street all the way to West Riverside Drive. And in the future, East Riverside Drive will have a shared-use path as well on the north side, and West Riverside Drive already has a shared-use path that goes to Blythe Park, so it's kind of consistent there, yeah.
Okay, I think that answers my question. You'd go north on that path, and since it's on the west side, you can easily get on Samamish.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
Other Commissioner questions or comments? Looking across and seeing none. So, I'd ask first if there is a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element Amendments and the Bike Plan.
I will move to Commissioner Robson, did you want to? I will move to adopt...
Commissioner Westerback?
Commissioner Westerback here, jumped at it, there we go. I move to adopt the recommendations in the finalized Bike Plan as written. I don't know if I said that correct or not?
Commissioner Robson, would you like a second?
Absolutely, yes, I would like a second.
So, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Elements, the Bike Plan, and I think I also heard in there the findings, conclusions, and recommendations, which would handle this item. Does that represent your motion?
That is correct, that would be the complete motion, thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion around that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Elements Amendments and the Bike Plan, and the findings, conclusions, and recommendations supporting that, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, okay, so we've got unanimous approval of that. I'd like to thank staff for their work on this. I know you received a lot of input on this from the Commission, there's a very high level of interest in the Bike Plan, as I think you're well aware, and you have been responsive to comments we made, so thank you for that, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much, do appreciate it.
Thank you, you're welcome.
All right, that would move us to our next item, which is the Transfer of Development Rights in Canyon Park, and I would open the public hearing on that item. Deputy Director Winchell, will you lead us through this one?
Yeah, tonight we are bringing you a follow-up on our last public hearing to the Transfer of Development Rights program. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, so I only have one screen, so give me a minute to get all of this maneuvered correctly. And then we also have tonight our consultant, Andrew Bjorn with Burke, to answer any questions you all might have about the Phase One Report, and then also we have some follow-up to some questions that were asked last time. So, as a reminder, the Canyon Park Transfer Development Rights Program is an implementation measure for the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, essentially to allow us to preserve activity units for essential public facilities in Canyon Park. Specific for this project is the Sound Transit Bus Base North Site, and so this program would allow us to take unused activity units from that site and transfer them to other locations in Canyon Park. Essentially, this could be a pilot program if we wish to do this in other parts of the city, or even expand it within Canyon Park. So, tonight, we're going to go over follow-up questions, some slight updates to the code language, and then talk about next steps for the program. So, just a reminder of what we've done so far, we've met with our Development Services Advisory Group, we've had study sessions with you all earlier this year, and then this is our fourth public hearing tonight. So, we received some follow-up questions from Commissioner Gustafson, and would like to go through those tonight. So, the first question was related to benefit calculations. So, essentially, the question was, if credits are costing $3 to $5 per foot, per square foot, what would that calculation look like once developers taking advantage of that? And the example was provided that for a 10,000-square-foot building, you're paying $5 per square foot, or $50,000, you know, you would receive a boost in FAR. And essentially, what this plan will be doing is, we're really going to be calculating and transferring square foot, square footage, not necessarily fully transferring FAR, although the FAR may be higher because we've transferred square feet to that site. And so, if a developer in Canyon Park wanted to develop a 5,000, on a 5,000-square-foot site, they needed a minimum FAR of two, and they wanted to add an additional 10,000 square feet, they would pay $5,000 to the city for, or they wanted, they wanted to, sorry, let me start over. So, if a developer on a 5,000-square-foot site wanted to build a 10,000-square-foot building, the max FAR would be 2.0, they could pay additional money, so if they wanted another 1,000 square feet, they could buy 1,000 square feet for $5,000, and that would raise the FAR from the base, the minimum base of two to 2.2. So, it would have more to do with, it's just an example of how that square footage would transfer, or how we would be calculating that transfer. And I have an example later that would, I think, make that a little bit clearer than I just explained it. But really, we're going to be hoping that folks are transferring square footage above and beyond, you know, just 1,000 square feet here and there, we're hoping for greater transfers of square footage. There was a second question about fractional credits, whether we would be allowing fractional credits, and we would be, we would not be allowing fractional credits, so we would be looking at transfers of 1,000 square feet or more in 1,000-square-foot increments. So, in terms of tracking and making sure that we're really getting the most out of this program, we'd be aiming for a minimum of 1,000, 1,000 square feet of transfer, and then those being transferred in 1,000-square-foot increments, so that we're not transferring like 100 square feet, or something along those lines. And then we also have an example of what this could look like. Essentially, let's say that there's a 10,000-square-foot site, so it requires a minimum FAR of, so this is the, let me start over, this is the sending site, so this is the site that has the square footage that would be sent to another site. They have a 10,000-square-foot lot, they have a minimum FAR of 2.0, so they need a building that's 20,000 square feet. They only want to build, so it's an essential, it's an essential public facility, and they only want to build 10,000-square-foot of building. So, what they would do is they would take, they would transfer that remaining 10,000 square feet of development capacity to meet the minimum requirements. So, once they transfer that capacity, essentially, they've met the requirement because those units are preserved. So, those would be in our TDR bank, and then let's say there is a site with a 5,000-square-foot maximum base FAR of 3.0, and so the building must be 15,000 square feet or less as of right. Let's say the landover wanted to build a 22,500-square-foot building, so they would purchase the remaining 7,500 square feet of development capacity to meet the minimum requirements. So, after they purchased that capacity, essentially, the process is, the sending site applies for and receives certification of TDR availability from the city. They use a TDR covenant registered to the parcel to sever the development rights on a site, and so that covenant would live with the land, if the land is sold, you would see that those development rights have been sold. And then the city, we would update the city's registry and potentially transfer to the city's TDR bank. Then later on, when the receiving site is ready to develop, they would be purchasing a certificate of CDR receipt from the city's TDR bank or other holder, they'd provide a statement about the TDR development rights used with permit applications for approval, and then the city would update its registry documenting the ownership history of the certificates. That's a very general process of how this would work. We also made some minor amendments to the code in between...
So, why don't we pause for a second? Were there any questions around that example? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you so much, Deputy Director Winchell, for providing that example, it was very clear, it was visual, it answered a lot of questions I had, and my ask for you is that we put that example in all of the documentation, for example, in the Burke Consulting Packet, and also in any presentations that we need.
Yes, I think, I think that's a great suggestion, especially as we move this to council, and even in our documents we will create after this to explain the program to folks. It's definitely a slightly hairy program, however you dice it. So, we've also made some changes to the text since last time, based on further conversations with Sound Transit and our city attorney. Those amendments in your packet are highlighted in gray, just so you can see what those are, what those changes are since the last, the last meeting. Essentially, most of the changes are like, we found some little Scrivener's errors, whereas we've been changing things, like an "a" or "the" appears in a place that just doesn't make sense. There are a few places where we had been working on, how can we make this even clearer? And so, we rearranged some of the formatting, not necessarily changing how it would work, but changing the fact that it's now understandable. And then also, there were some suggestions that had been made, that as we talked through them further, while the intent was good, the application of it in the code wasn't necessarily correct, and so, for example, F2 on page 26, there was some reference to processing it as a certain type of permit, but technically, it's not a permit, and so we wanted to remove that, that piece of code, and then a small change from a "shall" to a "may," as we wanted to make sure that we were requiring the covenant versus "may," which would be a little more like, you could do this, we want it to be, you will do this. So, that's a very quick summary of the changes in the code since last time, and those are, again, highlighted in gray, and realizing those of you who have a black-and-white packet, there are some things that are also highlighted in yellow. So, if you want clarification on anything before page 29, are changes that staff has made since the code was updated, the changes on 29 are changes to existing code that are highlighted in yellow. So, black-and-white packets not going to show you the differences between those two texts, I apologize for not thinking that one through before we printed these out.
So, are there any questions on the code that was just reviewed? Commissioner Gustafson, is your hand still up, or is that...
Oh, thank you, Chair. I do have another question about the administration of this, but I do think that might be later, but I will wait for now.
So, I've got one question. Both of the maps are still indicated as placeholder maps? What's the status there?
We are working with our consultant on getting those maps finalized, so the information will not be different, it will just look a little bit cleaner, we won't have the background information of the intersection performance on those maps. So, we're still working with our consultant to get that updated for the final packet, for the final approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, moving forward.
So, then, just to quickly go over the process again, for a sending site, so these are the sites that will be developing less than what the code permits, the sites that will be sending some of their development capacity to other locations, they will file an application with the city for a certificate of transfer of development rights availability. We would evaluate that application and provide a certificate of TDR availability. So, there's one thing that came up in the letter that you all received about a five-year limitation, and what the five-year limitation is for is for the certificate of TDR availability. And so, essentially, the certificate of TDR availability is kind of like a letter telling you how much, based on what you're, based on the conditions today, how much development can you send somewhere else? And so, we gave those a five-year expiration for a few reasons. Codes can change, developments can change, situations can change, and so we wanted to make sure that we didn't vest or have these TDR availabilities living out there forever. And so, that's why there is a five-year limit on the TDR availability. And so, essentially, the TDR availability tells us as staff how much can move from this site. Nothing is finalized until there's that TDR covenant, and so that tells them what they can put in the covenant. The covenant is what finalizes the severing it from the site. So, essentially, the, after the registration of the TDR covenant, we would issue a certificate of TDR receipt to the owner, essentially letting them know, this is what can be transferred. So, that's a little, there's a lot of TDR certificate, covenant, all the terms are defined, they start to get a little confusing because they all sound similar, but when they happen in the process and what they do is different, and so, just wanted to clarify that the certificate can expire, but once the covenant is recorded, those are the rights that can be moved. So, then, with the receiving site, during the land use application process, they would note their intent to use a certificate of TDR receipt to exceed the FAR. They would purchase those from the property owner or the city's TDR bank or certificate holders. They would provide evidence prior to final approval of development permits that they own these certificates, so they'd be allowed to go through the land use development process, but before we issue any final permits, they have to have those in hand, and so, you know, through conditions and through other protections we have available, we'd be making sure that it's very clear that, you know, the land use approval may show more than is permitted by the code, but that is with the assumption that they then have to receive these, they have to receive these additional development rights for the site before we'd actually issue the permit for them to build more than is permitted. And then we would record the use of those certificates, so that we know in the future, we don't want a situation where the 5,000 square feet got used on six different sites, and we are, you know, we want to make sure that we're complying with our own codes and not overusing any of these certificates. Are there any questions about process?
Commissioner Westerback? Commissioner Westerbeck?
I'll have a question, but I don't know if this is the right time and it's one that's come up before. It mostly pertains to what if they aren't used within five years?
So if they aren't used within five years, but they've been recorded as a covenant? Or if they aren't used within five years, but they've only gotten this certificate of availability?
Just the availability certificate and just no one has decided to move on them?
So essentially, my understanding of how we would process this is if someone gets the certificate of TDR availability. Though, those have to be memorialized with the covenant in association with development on the sending site. So if someone came in, got a certificate of TDR, um, availability for the sending site. And then they never did anything and they expired, then all of the development rights would still exist on that site. If they recorded the covenant and developed, then they, five years, 10 years, 20 years, they live in the bank. And so, um, they, if they do nothing on the site and, um. If they do nothing on the site, but they've recorded the covenant, then technically they couldn't develop anything above that when they come in for land use entitlements in the future. So let's say that someone does the TDR availability, they record the covenant, and then they don't follow through with their development plans. And 10 years later, they say, hey, I want to develop my site. Well, if, and my understanding of it is, is if those TDR credits that have been recorded with the covenant have never been used. They could essentially pull them back to the site, extinguish the covenant and develop to that full potential. So it really depends on whether the sending site follows through with their development or not. If they say they, this is, would be a very weird situation, um, but they record the covenant. They don't develop on the site, but then they sell those credits. Then essentially if someone came in to develop that site later, they could only develop to the point that, that the credits, the available. Trying to think of the right terms to use here, um, that the available development capacity is permitted on the site.
I think what I'm getting at, um, and I appreciate that because I understand that aspect a lot better. You know, we put in place a minimum density we wanted to see in these, in this part of Bothell. And Sound Transit, for example, saying, well, we don't want to put that, that in because we're doing our bus facility and it's very much what spurred this process. But we as a city are saying, we really want that maxed out. And if you're not going to max it out, we've got this TDR program we developed. And if no one ever uses them, then I feel like they've gotten away with underdeveloping an area where they said, we said, you need to develop X amount and you didn't. You put the TDR credits out there, which is great. We have a program for that now, and they weren't taken up. Is, is the requirement by Sound Transit to then somehow work to build something themselves or with a partner? That uses those credits so that they're on the hook to use, to, to, to redevelop that extra capacity within the, the zone where we want to see that extra building happen?
We haven't put anything like that in place in this ordinance. And so it really would, and I pulled in, um, uh, Andrew Bjorn with Burke. But it's my understanding that through this ordinance, we would not be putting anything like that in place. And that those, uh, essentially safeguards would not be there to require them to use these credits. But essentially, if and when the market hit a point that those credits were valuable and could be used, then they would come into play. Andrew, is there anything you'd want to add to that?
The only, the only other thing to add is that, um, this, uh, this program also follows along with. Sound Transit's, uh, ongoing policy for land disposal for affordable housing. So there is an interest that they have and they have disposed of other properties in Seattle and other places before. Specifically for the purposes that we're looking at for this TDR program. So when we're, like, I, I completely understand the, the reticence about it. It's, it's one of those things where, um, uh, it's, it's trying to leverage the fact that in a lot of other cases. This could be dropped in as an essential public facility and, uh, kind of, it, it might try to do an end run around.
Yeah.
Some of the provisions of the subarea plan.
Right, exactly. I know that, I remember, um, prior to my being on Planning Commission, um, this came to council. And they, uh, well, I should say the Sound Transit, their interest in creating this, this base came to council. And there was, there was some contention around it because we said, well, we set this aside for a subarea plan to have a certain amount of density. And we're going to create another node in the city, another commercial node. And they said, well, we absolutely can't do any more development than just the bus, this facility, and it wouldn't be compatible. You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want mixed use or apartments there and so forth, which I, I think is still a specious argument, but I won't get into that anymore. So, um, it feels like, yeah, they could get, kind of get away with something because they're Sound Transit. And I've, if, and I, and I, I use their, their transit, I like Sound Transit. But I feel like there should be some sort of teeth there, uh, so that, uh, we get the capacity that we, we planned for in our subarea plan. It feels like it's the missing piece in this TDR. We worked so hard on it, took a ton of staff time and, and money and effort. And it's been going on for a couple of years now, and we still don't have any way to claw back that capacity, that subarea plan that we asked for. Despite it being a very important public facility. So I don't know if there's an answer, but, um, and I know about the, what's it, 880? 800? Yeah, there we go. Yeah, yeah. So, and, and that's great. I love that they, they provide land for fantastic projects. So maybe they're compensating in other ways through that 8080, 80 program. And, and I shouldn't fuss over it, but, uh, I know it's come up a couple of times. So I just wanted to bring it up that one, one more time.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi Chair, Sarah Gustafson here. I do feel that, um, Commissioner Westerbeck's point is very well taken. And I do feel that it is within our bounds as Planning Commission, if we so desire to make a motion that. We want that in here. It doesn't necessarily need to go through to council, but if we believe it's important enough to stop the process to put that in. I feel we should at least have a discussion about it. So, um, I would move that we. Discuss Commissioner Westerbeck's misgivings and see if we want to pass on them. Or for the record that we want to change it.
Commissioner Kerd?
Thanks. Yeah, this is Karsten. I, um, I understand Commissioner Westerbeck's, um, point. And on Planning Commission, we are trying to make sure that our, um. Our recommendations are going to affect change, bring about change, especially in Canyon Park where we've spent so many hours, deliberations and. Um, vision and community conversations. But the heart of these amendments is to preserve a calculation. It's not necessarily to, uh, bring about change. And so for the purposes of making sure that the calculations work so that we can still, uh, be competitive for funding. I say that we continue to move the process forward and maybe include in our findings, conclusions and recommendations. That, um, uh, council consider, um. Mechanisms for, uh, encouragement of the, of use of these, um, credits or they're not credits, but. Development rights. There we go. Uh, so, um, the considerations that we've brought up at other meetings have been. How is the city and, um, uh, the, the community development department going to be advertising the use of these? These rights. Uh, and so whether that's, um, specific outreach to the development community. Or whenever a project is brought forward in one of the receiving sites. That, um, there's a specific time in the pre-application process, um, that, uh, the program can be highlighted. Those are types of like implementation that, um, isn't really in our purview. It's more in, um, community development's purview. And so, um, the encouragement to community development and to council to encourage the use of the, the program. Without holding up the process, um, to put teeth where I don't think that we, um. Have the dentistry to do so, um, is my opinion. Thanks.
So to be clear, the applicant from the sending site will be required to have the covenant in place before the permit is issued to build their project. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the city will hold those development rights in the bank?
They would be in the, the TDR bank.
Yes. And if those rights are not moving, there would be an opportunity to consider what steps should be taken to ensure their utilization.
Yeah, and I think as we start to, so, you know, the subarea plan's still pretty new and we're moving through some of the implementation measures. And so as we start to see interest in the receiving sites, I think that's definitely something as we're going through the pre-development process and we're continuing to work on. You know, I think Canyon Park is definitely a place where like a catalyst development is needed to really spur, um, the vision of that plan. But we can really think about how do we make sure folks know these are available? How can we make sure that they get used? And I think another thing about the program, um, to, is that it is so narrowly focused on one sending site. That it can't be overly abused in terms of, you know, anyone in Canyon Park who doesn't want to do it can preserve these credits. So, um, at this point, um, you know, and I think that's a really good point too, as we think about transfer of development rights moving forward. Is making sure that, um, you know, it's really, when we are doing these programs, there's some benefit to transferring the rights. We're wanting to preserve something. And in this case, um, you know, we love transit, but we also know that transit needs these utility yards that aren't always the easiest thing to cite. And so, um, in order to support transit, we're getting a bus base. And, um, you know, this is helping with us having bus rapid transit. And so it's kind of the exchange between the, the desire for meeting the, um, goals of the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. But also the reality that it's going to go somewhere. So how can we make the most of it? But I think these are all good points too, as we move forward, thinking about, you know, once we pass code, we always have to think about the forms we create. And how we, we, uh, encourage a program. And so I think everything from comments about the graphics showing how the program works. To how do we make sure that we plug this every time a developer asks us about one of these receiving sites are all well noted. To make sure that we're not just passing the program, putting in Bus Base North and forgetting that the credits exist.
You did make the comment that this is very narrowly tailored for this, the one sending site. Is there any concern about that? Uh, anybody else going to come knocking on the door and say, why them and not me? Or is the fact that it's just an essential public, just four essential public facilities protect you from that, uh, argument?
I think there's a little bit too of, this was specifically recommended in the Canyon Park Subarea Plan for these uses in this purpose. And so I think that we can come back to the fact that there is a public purpose to this. It's not necessarily just because we like this. It's that there's a public purpose to having a, a bus maintenance facility. But there's also a public purpose to reserving these, these sites. So if other folks came forward in the future, I think we'd really have to look at it as staff as, is this meeting a public purpose? Is this advancing the Canyon Park Subarea Plan? Is this moving things forward in the right direction? And making sure that we're coming back to that public purpose each time. And, and as new requests potentially come in, making sure that they fall into line with all of those things that make sense.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Westerbeck?
Just want to follow up and say, I totally appreciate what Commissioner Kerd said. I also appreciate, uh, Commissioner Augustus and, um, bringing the, the point up. I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, go to the mat on this. I just wanted to bring it up, make sure we, we kind of aired it out and understood. And I also have, um, I'm, I'm pretty confident that they are, the credits, the development rights will actually probably get used. Because it is going to be an up and coming area and we're going to need it developed. So I'm not super concerned about it. Five years just seemed kind of short and I just want to ensure that, you know, it gets used. And, um, I also imagine, um, so first of all, uh, a very, very good point made that we just kind of have to have this process in place, you know? And then I imagine this can get, um, tweaked or whatever over time. As, you know, cross that bridge when we come to it, sort of, if this became an issue. And, uh, and we had to, to work on something creative at the five-year point and no one had used the credits. So I also have faith in that process as well. So I'm not going to blow this all up, but I just wanted to at least bring it up. Cause I think it also came up in the letter today, um, maybe tangentially from the Canyon Park Business Association, whatever they're called. But that's it. Appreciate it.
Hey, Commissioner Gustafson?
Thank you Chair, Sarah Gustafson here. I appreciate the decision to move forward without specific expiration dates. Um, and the decision to really focus on the marketing and fine tuning of this program. But for me, that brings up the question of how many staff hours each year do we estimate might be used to do this work? Are we looking at 30 hours perhaps? And what is the cost there? And is Sound Transit going to help offset that cost? They've already offset the cost for the setup, but the ongoing administration, if we really want to do this well. Could potentially be a staff burden for all the great work we're doing. Will this be in the interlocal agreement? How can we get Sound Transit to chip in, in other words?
So I can just add in that at this point, we don't have any agreements with Sound Transit as we move forward to fund administration of the program or, or anything along those lines. They are supporting the development of this ordinance. Um, I think as we continue conversations with them, you know, it really depends on what happens that year. So I think the first year that we send from the receiving site will be heavy in amount, the amount of work. But there's also separate agreements with Sound Transit in terms of, um, of, uh, not just in our local agreements, but how we contract with them on supporting our work and, and funding some of that. So when we're processing the sending site, I'm sure that there will be more intensive, uh, time on staff on administering that. And that's something that as we're working on our work plan, we'll think about. The year-to-year in terms of marketing and those sorts of things is probably a, not a huge demand. But it's when someone actually then comes in for a receiving site or transferring things within the bank, that then there may be some more, uh, demand on staff. And so I think that's something too, that we can look at whether there's, um, a need for, uh, uh, administration fee in our code. Or something along those lines to make sure that, um, you know, there's compensation for work done. That being said, uh, it's outside of the scope of this project, but we are doing, um, some fee studies in the upcoming biennium. And so maybe there's some opportunity in that to look at, is there an administration fee for transferring credits from the bank? Or for applying for, uh, receiving sites or, or certificates of availability? So that way we make sure that we are, um, getting compensated for the time it takes staff to run the program, um, and, and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Could I just add something, Ashley? Is that okay?
Of course.
Oh, great. Um, so one other thing to note as well is that the administrative costs for the program. Generally would not only include, um, managing those certificates and, uh, tracking TDR availability and the like. Uh, but also on the other end with the use of the revenues as well. And this is, it, it's, I'm pointing this out not because it's something that we would expect to be very onerous. Because, you know, we're specifically making recommendations as part of this for, um, you know, the city to be working with partners that. You know, are developing, uh, affordable housing in the area. But, um, it is something else to take into consideration because depending on the level of oversight that would be necessary over the longer term. That may also be a source for, um, staff time. So. Staff time, so.
Are there Commissioner comments? Commissioner Gustafson, your hand? Still up?
Apologies.
Oh, no problem. So Deputy Director Winchell, I'd like to look at, we all received the email from the Canyon Park Business Owners Association. Could you address the points raised in that email for us?
Let me stop sharing my screen for a moment and pull up the email. So I think we covered one of the items, which was that these expire after five years. And so I think we've addressed that it's the availability that expires, not the actual certificate. There were also some concerns about the administration of the program.
Yes.
One thing I want to note, and this is similar on and. Maybe not the most direct answer, but on a lot of the things we pass, whether it is. Middle housing, whether it's transfer of development rights, a lot of times we put a lot of effort into the code and then once something is adopted, we spend time working on the implementation of the forms. Of the exact process of how this code would be done in real life. And so those are conversations that we're continuing to have. Some of the process documents provided by BERC are an example of that, but there will be a time where we're figuring out, what do these forms look like? What do we make sure we get in the ILA? What are the things we need on file to get this done? So that is something that we will be continuing to work on and that we are. Very aware need to be developed in association with this program.
So the the first paragraph, it talks about establishing the value of the credits and I'm. Inferring that that is something that will be part of the implementation. That's not part of the adoption here.
Yeah, and the the Phase One report includes information about the potential cost of those credits. And so we do have information about what that cost could look like and how that would be administered. And so that's something that we would include as a part of the. Implementation. And then Andrew, if you want to provide some more background on that.
Yeah. I think I could make two comments about this in particular. One is that we did take a look at. Prototypical financial scenarios to just get a general idea about how much you could charge for additional. Additional development on a site. It's it's something, it, you know, financial analysis of real estate is sometimes more art than a science. But it's something where we wanted to make sure that we weren't encouraging densities would be. Not supported with current or expected future rents. But we fully recognize that there's a fair. Margin of error associated with those. So one of the other provisions that we recommend as part of this is to both revisit pricing. Into the future at a, say, the five, I believe that it's at the five year mark that we recommend it. On the other hand, having a almost a check valve in place so that if there is a. If developers think that this is a great deal, they can't buy them all up all at once, that there is a provision so that. You would only release part of them and if if it does seem like they're more valuable than what they've been priced at, that there would be some. Provisions in the administration that would allow you to increase the prices and. Get more of a yield from the credits themselves, but we, the Phase One report tries to, you know, plant a flag, get a good starting location. And then it's expected that over time, there would be adjustments either up or down on the basis of whether people take them or not.
Great, thank you. I just want to be sure, you know, we are in a public hearing. This is the comment we received. So for the record, I want us to go through and respond to this and.
Yes.
Dot our i's and cross our t's. So the second point does go to the five years and I think we addressed that. Third point.
Yeah, so this is talking a little bit about the. TDR deal for Sound Transit differing differing in substantive ways from the standard process outlined in the ordinance. So first off, the outline in the ordinance does have a caveat for interlocal agreements and so it is. It's not that the process is different for Sound Transit. It's that there's essentially two processes. There's one for. Organizations that are able to do interlocal agreements, so government agencies, and then there's a process for. Sound Transit could follow the code or they could do the interlocal agreement process. It doesn't necessarily get them out of anything. It's just a different way to calculate that sending site or process the sending site. And then, let's see. It does also talk about the TDR credits from Sound Transit being subject to additional restrictions that are likely to make it more difficult to find a buyer for those credits. That's something that, to my understanding, is outside of our control. Sound Transit has their own rules and bylaws of of how they sell real estate. And so these credits would be subject to those. And so that's the comment that is being made there. You know, whether or not those make it more difficult to find a buyer for those credits. I'm not aware of whether that's the case or not. We also have affordability requirements in the city and other things that these credits may fall in line with those requirements otherwise.
And and the final part of that paragraph is a request for notice of the ILA and presumably that'll happen.
Yeah, I would need to look exactly at our city code about what our noticing requirements are for the interlocal agreement, but interlocal agreements. Are essentially contracts between the city and Sound Transit. And so in order to enter into those contracts, we'd need to follow our own processes and code.
Okay. Fourth point goes to SEPA.
So our city practice is to complete SEPA after Planning Commission. So the thought of that being that if we issue SEPA prior to Planning Commission, there are significant changes, then we have to issue a SEPA addendum and then we'll come back to you all. And if there's other significant changes, then we might, so we could end up in a little bit of a SEPA circle. And so state law does allow us, you know, it's before it's adopted that we need to go through the SEPA process. We have looked at the SEPA analysis and and a lot of the work that's before you today is based on the existing environmental impact statement. And based on the existing environmental work that's been been done for Canyon Park. They make a comment about whether or not, I think one of their concerns is, say, we adopt this Canyon Park. This change to the Canyon Park SubArea Plan code. And then in a few years, we decide that we want to have more sending and receiving sites. Would we just do a code amendment, like like a housekeeping code amendment, the kind that you all see all the time? Or would we go back through a review process similar to this? And I feel pretty comfortable saying that, you know, in order to identify sending and receiving sites and make sure that we're not. Pushing capacity or or having negative impacts on our environmental review, existing environmental review, that we would do. Some level of analysis to make sure that we aren't just changing sending and receiving sites in the code and having impacts that weren't anticipated. And then the final one, and I think I know why Steve came up here, has to do with.
Traffic.
Traffic. And so I will let him take that one so that it's correct.
So I think the question was, would we mitigate? For any impacts in in the packet? Well, one thing I would point out is the city of Bothell, the municipal code, our requirement is to. Figure out a level of service averaged over a corridor, which needs to be level of service E. It's not intersection by intersection. All scenarios actually meet that requirement. So we would not mitigate. Now, that being said. Scenario four, for one particular intersection, the delay, average delay there goes up by about 90 seconds, which is quite significant. So that's why staff is not recommending scenario four as a good option. Even though it still meets the corridor wide level of service requirement. So again, bottom line from a transportation point of view. Some intersections get a little worse, some get a little better. There are a few seconds here and there. Not to the level of mitigation.
Okay, great, thank you. So were there any other public comments for us to consider during the hearing?
We've not received any other public comments.
Okay, great. Any other Commissioner questions or comments? And I think we would close the hearing and then act on the proposal. Is there a motion? Commissioner Curd?
Thanks. I move that the Planning Commission. Adopt the findings, conclusions, and recommendations for the proposed code amendments regarding transfer of development rights in the Canyon Park SubArea.
Is there a second? Commissioner Robson?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the proposed code amendments regarding. Transfer development rights in the Canyon Park SubArea and the findings, conclusions, and recommendations as provided in our packet. Any discussion around that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion as proposed?
Aye.
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 We have all six commissioners present voting affirmatively to adopt the motion. I'd like to thank staff for their work on this one as well. It's been a long journey. A lot of interest from parties involved, so. Thank you for being responsive and moving this forward.
Thank you and and thanks, Andrew. I guess I can let you off for the night now. Bye.
All right, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business on our agenda?
No unfinished business tonight.
Okay, next item is reports from staff.
Just quickly provide a few updates. So the seventh Planning Commissioner was selected last night. Her name is Sharon Jones. We just got notice of it today, so we've emailed her, but haven't necessarily been able to touch base yet. We're hoping to get her oriented and everything ready so that she can at least start by the beginning of the year. So that'll be really exciting. So my understanding, she's a downtown resident and she works for UW Bothell and has a really great background that I think will. Pair well with with the Planning Commission. So we're excited to have her and have a full commission again. And then we are currently working on our 2023 work plan and docket. It'll look slightly different than what you all have seen in the past. We're working on essentially kind of laying out a five year work plan and then individual items for each year. As the year comes up. So really wanting to look at our long range planning from a very future focused. What do we need to get done and make sure that we're really laying things out and thinking about how much staffing and time we have to work on those things. So it'll look slightly different, but we will spend time walking you all through it and talking you through. How we've done things and calculated things and we think it'll really set us up well for knowing not where we're just going for 2023, but know where we're going in 2024. And even starting to think about what are we going to be doing in 25, 26. So those are our major updates and then assuming all continues going well on the docket, our new director, Jason Greenspan, is planning on joining us on the 21st of this month. So please let us know if any last minute changes to your holiday schedule comes up. I know sometimes you're like, I will do all these things before the holidays and then you're like, no, I'm gonna be cozy and not do things. So let us know if you won't be able to make it so we can reschedule if we're not going to have a quorum. With that, I have no further reports from staff.
Thank you, and we'll look forward to our new commissioner and also meeting the director. Reports from members. Seeing none, we have an item to report to council. Oh, Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Just a quick note that I did attend the racially. One second here. The racially disparate impacts and how to evaluate them in planning webinar that was yesterday. And one very interesting takeaway that I, from this webinar, which was presented by Washington Department of Commerce. Is that they're asking people to get very creative with the kind of data that is used to paint a picture of the city. And. Get a background of what are vulnerable populations to displacement, what are existing imbalances? I have a list of. Information that they recommended using community histories, whether they're online or oral. Going into your pros plan data and dragging out data, looking at census tract data. For your city, if it's homogeneous and comparing it to Washington as a whole. So there was a lot of good information and basically it's. Don't let perfect be the enemy of the good when trying to get a picture of what's going on in your city.
Well, great, thank you. Other reports from members?
Can I ask you about that? Is that, is there a synopsis or PDFs or anything like that, that that Commissioner Gustafson that we can review from that? Since I didn't get to catch that.
Yeah, maybe I can send it to Ashley.
Sure.
There were some guidance on that with it.
I'd love to see that, learn from it. Thanks.
Thank you.
That'd be great, thank you. Others?
I don't know if it's appropriate for staff to comment at this point, but I did just want to affirm that the webinar that Commissioner Gustafson attended. Is a part, so that work is a part of HB 1220 and required for our comprehensive plan updates. And so the city of Bothell has a grant from the Department of Commerce to complete that work and so it'll be a part of our. Middle Housing Implementation Grant. And just wanted to point out, too, that because it's a part of the middle housing, just because it's a part of the Middle Housing Implementation Grant, doesn't mean it's just about racially disparate impacts for middle housing. It's racially disparate impacts across all of our planning efforts. And so I'm glad you were able to attend and you'll definitely be hearing more about that work in Bothell in the upcoming year. And I think it'll tie in a lot with the Tell the Full Story project as well.
Great, and I know the rest of the commission will be very interested in hearing that as well. Okay, anything else? So our our next item is a draft letter to council. We had. Comment in our packets and what I would propose is that there be a motion that we transmit this. When the motion is seconded, then we would open it for discussion. And then based on the discussion, we'd make any modifications before we adopt. So if that works for everyone, is there a motion to adopt this letter as proposed? Commissioner Westbeck?
I'm happy to adopt the letter on middle housing as written, as proposed, as it is now.
Is there a second? Commissioner Curd?
I second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we transmit this this letter to council. Is there discussion around it? I actually have two points. If no, Commissioner Curd, no?
Okay, I wanted to say thank you to the ad hoc committee for putting this together during your own hours. So thank you. I really especially appreciated that you brought it home to. Some of the work that the commission has done, especially communicating middle housing in Lower Maywood. So I just wanted to show my appreciation for those callbacks.
All right, other comments? So I had two thoughts. I can't help myself from editing. Right at the top, we say we urge you to pass and one of the things that we've. Felt in the commission is a need to act a little more expeditiously on this. So I would propose that we edit that sentence to, we urge you to act expeditiously to pass that guidelines. Just to kind of. Give a little more push to it. Any, any thoughts or questions? Okay, and then. Towards the end, I also thought about including the thought, and I have this, we hope that we can continue to work together to expand housing opportunities. Kind of place the seed that this isn't the end. They're not done. There's more, more work to be done here, but you know, this is, this is a good step. We want this to happen quickly, but then we want to do more in the future.
I concur with both those myself.
So again, just to be sure, we have them as, that would be the, added the words, act expeditiously to pass right at the top there. And then the sentence that I had to add at the bottom is, we hope that we can continue to work together to expand housing opportunities. So as, as it's presented here, it would be a presentation read by Commissioner Robson to the council. And everyone is comfortable with that approach? Okay, so then Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I did want to mention that the amazing analogy to a baby growing up was Commissioner Robson's idea, and I love it. And Commissioner Robson, I think you recommended even starting with that, imagine the way you feel, et cetera, after you introduced yourself. And I said, oh, let's put that later on in the letter, and let's do the legal stuff up front. And then looking at it and thinking about it, I think if we were to choose to change it up, starting with that, imagine that analogy, that connection to families and growing up, I would be fine moving that up. So it's to Commissioner Robson, really.
Commissioner Robson?
Who's making the changes to this document right now? Am I supposed to be making these changes to this doc, documenting the changes here? I am, okay.
I, I wrote down.
Let me catch up.
Okay.
Hang on. I have, so I have the copy and paste a little bit here. Hang on.
Oops, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm afraid I've fallen behind on what changes you guys asked to make. I can't use my keyboard in both Zoom and in Word at once. So just give me a second. Okay, so, so I actually wasn't able to make, because I was copying and pasting from email, I wasn't able to catch where you wanted to make those first changes. In the first paragraph, I'm now seeing it, it's kind of the third sentence down. We urge you to exped-
To act expeditiously to?
Expeditiously, I'm going to practice that. Act expeditiously to pass the middle housing guidelines recommended by the city
Yes.
Staff and Planning Commission. Okay. And then I think, Sarah, I'm just going to leave it where it was, just so we don't have to edit it together real time, when you guys can't see my screen and that kind of thing. I think it's a good letter. I think we'll get our points across. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
When is this meeting that I'm reading this?
So I think there's two upcoming opportunities. One, tomorrow, our director is providing an update on middle housing ordinance to council, and essentially he will be going over the upcoming schedule and what to expect in the new year. But that's like a five-minute presentation at the top of city council tomorrow. And then on January 17th, there will be a study session at city council. It'll be the first of two study sessions on middle housing. The first one is January 17th. The second one is, I believe, February 7th. And then we're planning on public hearings on, I'll confirm this via email, because I'm using what I'm remembering. I believe it is February 21st and March 7th for public hearings with city council. But I will confirm that via email. So you have a few dates that you get, that middle housing is going to city council. Two of those will have a dedicated public hearing comment time. And then two of those will be study sessions that won't have dedicated public hearings, but will have public comment periods, or public comment at the top of the meeting.
Doesn't the council agenda have a item, reports from commissions, boards of commissions?
That's, yes. And so if there's a, if there, if you're wanting to speak at reports from commissions, I'll need to coordinate with the city clerk to determine what meeting that would be at. So I think there's a question of whether you want to speak during public comment, or if you want this to be a formal report from commissions. If it's, if it's during public comments, those are open at any, any city council meeting. If you wanted it to be a report from commission, I think I need to coordinate that with our city clerk to get it on the agenda.
Well, this is something that we are adopting as a motion from the Planning Commission. I'm kind of looking across, my sense would be, it should be a report from commission to give it, you know, the official weight behind it.
Okay. So we have a meeting on December 13th. I'm not certain I can get it in that packet. I'll have to work with our city clerk. The next meeting would be January 10th.
Commissioner Robson?
I just want to recommend that we read it after the break. People, it will pack more punch if we can stack it as close to the voting, if we can, in sort of one chunk of the study session and public comment, as opposed to giving it a long break between our comment and the official study session. So I would, I would recommend that we do it as close to the study sessions and public comments areas as we can.
So when the middle housing item comes up for council, the first time it comes up for council discussion, maybe we'd make this statement as a commission?
Yeah, so that would be January 17th.
And are you available for that, Commissioner Robson? Or you can confirm that?
I believe so. I have small children, so I always have to keep myself fast and loose. But, um, yes.
Okay, good. All right, any other discussion around this? Commissioner Westerback?
Just to be clear, are we talking about when we present the information as, as a Planning Commission formally, that we have asked to get on the docket, like as you did just a minute ago? That is beyond the, the letter that we wrote, or is it just this report, and just this letter is acting as the kind of a, it sounds like you were, you were indicating maybe we were reporting out something a little more robust, that may maybe take a few minutes?
Well, I think the letter is separate from our recommendations on middle housing. We've already
Right, right.
made that. This is kind of a statement, a sense of the, where the commission is on this as a body, wanting them to move.
So, so this is the thing that we will be presenting instead of doing public comment, even though it's brief? Like, I'm fine with, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, we typically don't make a public comment. Sometimes-
No, no, I didn't think so. But like Deputy Director Wenchel said, you know, we have to get on the docket, even if it's just a minute or two.
Yeah.
But it's to read this, this letter
Yes.
to kind of wrap things up. Okay, cool, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any other discussion around?
I'd like to just make one recommendation, that in your motion, you state what, what date you would like this on the docket, so then I can work with our clerk's office.
And you indicated January 17th?
January 17th is the first study session. So if you wanted it to be on the same night as that study session, that would be the date.
So is there an amendment to the motion to have this presented to council on January 17th?
Commissioner Westerback here, I'd be happy to amend the motion. Was it the one we voted on previously, or are we still in the middle of it?
Yes.
Okay. Be amending motion to the previous motion about the reading the letter, that we would do the, the letter read to council on January 17th, study session for council.
Is there a second? Commissioner Robson?
I second the motion.
All right, any other discussion? And if you do have any conflicts, I'm sure any one of a number of commissioners would be glad to step in for you, just let us know. But we're glad to have you take the opportunity. All right, so we have a motion before us that the letter, as, as edited during this meeting, be presented to council in their January 17th meeting. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have unanimous vote to present it. So that letter will be put in their packet for the 17th, and we move forward. All right, thank you. My screen went to sleep, but I think we're done. So any other items to report to council? Seeing none, then there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Curd?
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second, Commissioner Gustafson?
Excuse me, I second the motion.
All right, all in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the meeting is adjourned at 7:42 PM. Our next meeting will be December 21st, and we'll see you there. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, good night.